Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Lord, thank you for this beautiful weather. Thank you for being able to get out and conduct the city business. Lord, we just ask you to watch over our veterans and leaders in the court. Amen.
John, play it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any kind of motion of the agenda?
I add something to the agenda. I've been making awareness of a lot of the issue with the city. And I'd like to see us go on executive session to discuss it. Give me a little more. Potential lawsuit.
Okay, let's do that at the end. You want to?
That'll be fine.
Have you talked to Mr. Pickett about that?
Not yet.
Mr. Faust has asked the City of Jansburg, Council of the City Council, to go into closed session dealing with the personnel or with...
It's liability of the city.
Liability. Okay, that's a P, item P on the agenda, the last item of the season. Any other changes or recommendations for the agenda? Yeah, did I get a motion for this? That was just a transfer motion that I asked for. Did I get a motion? If not, I'd like to have mine. About the agenda.
Excuse me, I make a motion to accept the change.
Agenda with the amendment.
Second.
That motion second, discussion?
Yeah.
Being in our favor by short hands, thank you, council. But it being known that Tony is not here this evening and I do not know why. Have you heard anything?
No, I have not.
Next item, read the minutes of the April 2nd, 2018 regular meeting, Ms. Hoyle.
Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invocation. Councilmember Anson Navy led an incital to pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Anson Navy stated the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hoole read the minutes of the March 5th, 2018 regular meeting. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to Dr. Minutes as read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Leeny to present to council the expected cost to repair stormwater structures at Speedy Burger, Jacobs Point, and Elizabeth Street. Mr. Leeny stated that materials for the project would cost approximately $20,000 and the city would provide the labor. He estimated that an engineer would be an additional expense of $5,000. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the $20,000 in materials and no more than $5,000 for the engineer. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to ask for council's approval to add Appalachian Trail to the next paving project. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to add Appalachian Trail. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present for council approval an updated sick leave policy. Mr. Leeny read the changes to the policy and asked that the policy be made a part of the record of these minutes. Mayor Weaver stated that the old policy, which required a doctor's excuse for one day out, had been revised so that employees could call in for their visitor or the mayor and not be required to have a doctor's excuse. He stated the old policy was put into place when the city had only 25 employees and if three were absent, it would be difficult to get city work done. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the updated policy. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Sunny Proctor to give an update on the parole over pool property. Councilmember Proctor stated he was in the process of obtaining estimates on foundations and roofing. He also had been in contact with an architect. Mayor Weaver asked Councilmember Proctor what are the specific plans for the property. Councilmember Proctor stated that he would like to salvage the building due to historical significance and depending on what we decide to do with the green space, there are many options. Mayor Weaver said the original intent was for city restrooms, which was a major concern for Main Street. And that's what happened to that plan. Councilmember Proctor stated that the restrooms have fallen by the wayside. Mayor Weaver asked if the restrooms could be put back into the plan. Councilmember Proctor stated that whatever use we find for the building, it will have restrooms. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Walt Cagle and Keith Cagle with the Pickens County Sportsman's Club to present to council dates of the kids fishing rodeo at Cove Creek. Mr. Cagle stated that the dates of the rodeo would be May 9th through the 12th, 2018, and requested permission from council to use the Cove property exclusively for the event on those dates. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Cagle to give a history of the fishing rodeo. Following Mr. Cagle's statements, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to allow the Pickens County Sportsman's Club to have use of the Cove Creek property for the fishing event, May 9th through 12th, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion passed by three votes. Councilmember John Faust abstained as he is a member of the Pickens County Sportsman's Club. Item A1 under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Leeny to present to council a letter and resolution from the chamber requesting that the city follow suit with the county in handling the designated economic development funds. That being to continue to send the funds to the chamber and the chamber will hold the funds in escrow until a new economic development director can be found. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve your request from the chamber. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed with two votes for. Councilmembers Sunny Proctor and Anson Navy abstained from voting because they are members of the chamber. Item B under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny. Mr. Leeny asked that a committee be formed consisting of himself, the mayor, and Councilmember Anson Navy to decide on how to proceed with the downtown lighting project that was presented at the last work session. Mayor Weaver stated that his committee would report at the next month's regular council meeting. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present a request from Prevent Child Abuse Pickings Group to close South Main Street beginning at noon on September 8th in order to hold their annual long table fundraiser event. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the closing of South Main from noon until the event is complete, which would be sometime around midnight. Councilmember Anson Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present the request that a church be located at Appalachian Circle and Highway 515. He stated that there was no need for a zoning change as the city ordinance has allowed churches in any zoning area with the approval of council. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the church at Appalachian Circle and Highway 515. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present for council approval a request from Georgia Power for six easements on city-owned property located on John Lane. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion that council approve the easements. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion passed by three votes. Councilmember John Faust abstained as he is employed by Georgia Power. Item F under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present for council approval the sale of two propane tanks and the propane located at Cove, at the Cove well. He stated that the city had an offer of $1,700 each for the tanks. Mayor Weaver stated that the reason for the sale was due to the emergency generator change necessary for that location from propane power to diesel power. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for the sale of the tanks and the propane. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made such motion. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item G under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present the reopening of Dixie Street located at the middle school. Mr. Leeny stated that although in the past the school had requested the road be reopened and council had approved the reopening, at the present time, the school didn't care if it was reopened or not. He asked for council's approval or disapproval on adding this to the next paving project. He stated that he had Johnson Paving estimate what it would cost to reopen and pave the section of the road. They had estimated $40,000. Mayor Weaver stated that the city does now own the property and that opening the road might be something the city could look at doing at a later time. He entertained a motion not to put Dixie Street on the reopening plans. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Leeny to present the repair and paving of J.L. White Drive. He stated that much damage had been done to the road due to the repair of a large water leak last year. He stated that he is asking for approval from council to put this repaired paving on the next splosh project. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to add J.L. White Drive to the next splosh project. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item I under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Leeny to present for council's approval a multi-use facility to be located in what is known as the Miller Law Office Building on Main Street. Mayor Weaver stated that this would be a multi-use facility which would be used for a coffee shop, a meeting facility, and would also hold church services on Sunday morning each week. Mayor Weaver stated that this building would not be known as a church facility and would not be owned by the church. He also stated that the city would like for them to have church services there as long as they don't ask the city to bend the alcohol ordinances that are in place. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the use of the building. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item J under new business, Mayor Weaver called upon Financial Director Lisa Hoole to present for council's approval the addition of the city manager to all city bank accounts, signature cards. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the addition. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item K under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Underwood, Director Planning and Zoning, to present to council a request from Wingsology to close the street next to his building and sell alcohol outside for Cinco de Mayo celebration as he had in the past for Jeep Fest. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the side alcohol sales for Wingsology. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item L under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Underwood to present an application for selling alcohol, bear in mind, by the package from M. Dado Shubhuri, manager of the Exxon Convenience Store located at 1757 Highway 53 West. Mr. Underwood stated that the background check had been received and there is nothing that would prevent him from obtaining an alcohol license. He is requesting approval to continue the application process. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Finance Director Lisa Hoole gave the financial report for the month of March 2018. Lonnie Waters updated council on roads. Red Global gave a report of police activities for the month of March 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of March 2018. Any other business to come before council? Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting we held May 7th, 2018.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve the minutes as read? Motion in second, discussion? Being in our favor by short hands, council. Old business. First item, parole, parole for pool property. Sunny?
Turned into really old business. Since changing gears a little bit last time, Jim and I have spent a fair amount of energy in looking at bathroom design. The cost for a commercial construction project like that would become exorbitant. So we're going to maybe try to do it with some sort of local, maybe internal labor, at least look at the cost. The mayor reminded us in our work session that the original plan included using a commercial type of bathroom to go into the old parole building. And I think since that was the original plan, it would better of us to at least look at that plan from a cost perspective to see if it's more reasonable. And so those things are still in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, alcohol license approval. Was there any questions for Mr. Proctor? Okay, sorry, come on, son. Item B, alcohol license approval, Exxon Convenience Store. We're moving forward with it. This should be the final, last approval.
Yes.
Please give us an update.
We ran into a problem with getting our fingerprints back. And Mr. Chadbury was called today by myself and the young lady at the police station and told that he needs to come back and run his fingerprints again. Not for any problem, but because we have a problem getting things from the state to NGIC or whatever, NCIC.
Okay.
And that's all fixed now. Just as soon as Mr. Chadbury comes in and gets his fingerprints and they come back approved, then you can approve his permanent license. But we do have, the ordinance has provisions in there. You can issue him a temporary license for 90 days if you so achieve.
If his license, if his fingerprints come back approved?
No, before his fingerprints come back.
Well, I don't know if that should be, Ms. Pickett? I think we need to wait. Council, you want to put a opinion on this?
I bet you it's a little foggy, Mr. Pickett's legal, though.
Well, we just do it next month. We're sorry about the delay, but it's...
It's up to yous.
Okay. So you're making a request to give a temporary even though he's not approved?
Right.
Up the process?
The only thing holding him up is his fingerprints.
My recommendation would have to be that his fingerprints have not been approved.
So we'll see if April 8th, June. Sorry. Tell him. Be old business again. Under new business, we have item A, Doris Wigginton Park. We have with us tonight Dr. Robert Keller. Let it come forward.
Let me fire up the power going here. Your Honor, Council Pete, thank you for having me here. Let's see. Get this to work here. A and B, there we go. Let's hit. It's not going to do it. I'll be honest. Yeah, but it didn't pop up over here. What did you do to get it back in there? I guess once you try to run the slide, you try to run the projector the way it is, and you get into a slideshow, it doesn't work. Do I just ain't believe it like that?
All right, there it is.
Okay. Oh, glad I had the full screen, but, and I don't do well sitting down, so if you hold that, I'll say it up. Council Pete, John Faust, and Ann Stevie asked me to look into something that we could possibly do with the Doris Wigginton Park. I'm the chief executive officer of the Atlantic Coast Conservancy. We've got experience working with some of these things. And I came up with an idea and I'd like to share it with the members of the city council and your honor and the visitors. In the course of our activities, what we do is we conserve land and we provide this land for outdoor recreation over by the people on a regular basis. And one of the things we do is we provide, let's see, we've only got the page down. There we go. We've got a conservation easement on property down at Dolphin Island, Alabama. Down at Dolphin Island, Alabama, where the birds kind of winging their way across the Gulf of Mexico from South America on their trip back up into North America. This is the first bit of land that they hit. Oftentimes, this is the first drink of water they've had in 600 miles. And the birding here is phenomenal. So what people do is they flock to Dolphin Island to come to this area right here. This is called the Dolphin Island Bird Sanctuary, the Otterbone Sanctuary. And one of the first things you notice here is that there's a lot of fresh water there. So the people come in from all over the world to see these animals come across the Gulf of Mexico. And what they do is they come to this area to see this place, this bird sanctuary. And this bird sanctuary is the epitome of a passive park. There's some... Whoops. Let's go back up here. Whoops, and there we go. There are some water features. There are some piers. There are areas for the people to walk. And the habitat that you see here is pretty much pristine maritime forest along with beach and coastal scrub habitat. And they've got walkways throughout the bird sanctuary. No facilities other than the walkways. They just have an entrance into the place and they've got these walkways that go through the habitat. And what they've got is they have birds. The birds of all varieties, there's more varieties of birds that come through there than any other place in the United States that's most diverse. It is critical birding habitat. You have shorebirds. You have, this is a hacking platform where you have the Osprey up there and we have the hacking platforms being shared by great horned owls. They've got all sorts of birds and the people go there to spend their money. And here they are out on the beach looking at this. So there's a pilgrimage. They come when the birds are coming across the Gulf of Mexico and when they go back for the winter migration. One of the things that's unique about this place and right here, and you can see it here. This is called the Mobile Bay Basin. Dolphin Island is down here on the southern end of the Mobile Basin. And right up here, right where we are, is the very tip-top of the Mobile Basin here in Pickens County. So the water, fresh water, starts here and basically runs down all the way into the Mobile Basin and out past Dolphin Island. So we have a connection with this. Now, the birds don't necessarily migrate per that. Jasper's in the Atlantic Flyway and the majority of Dolphin Island and Alabama is in the Mississippi Flyway. But the birds still pretty much come through the area and they're headed up towards our place and for parts up to the north. This is Doris Wigginton Park. As you can see, it's a relatively undisturbed park. It's in close proximity to the subdivision there. It has a couple of entrances. And it's got a little bit of heterogeneous habitat, but the majority of it is oak hickory habitat. We've got some open spaces in there. And one of the things that makes this appealing to as a birding park is that there's nothing there. It has no infrastructure. In birding parks, you do not need any infrastructure. One of the things that it does have is a perception of a problem. And from what I understand, it is just that. It is a perception that nothing bad has happened there, but people think that this is an unsafe place. One of the things that Dolphin Island has is that they close the park at sunset, which I think is a really good idea. I think that this, if you were to close this park at sunset and open it back up at sunrise, I think that that might give it a perception of safety. And what you need to do in this area is to look at your control ways. You've got two accesses. You have one here on, and what is that, chief? That's...
Hood Road.
Is it Hood Road? So you've got one big access here on Hood and then you've got one along the ridge. There's a couple of other access points. But I think that if you were to put gates, and the gates that I'm speaking of look like this. They're big and they're yellow and they're very apparent. If you put gates on that area, and you could possibly use stones in some of the other areas if indeed unauthorized access was a problem. But I think that these gates, if you shut them at dusk, open them at dawn, that you would give the perception of people being there and you would keep the car traffic out. You're not shutting the park off. The people can still go and enjoy the park, but they just can't pull the cars in there. And one of the things that I suggest that you do in regards to infrastructure is create, and this is something you see on the Appalachian Trail. These are called mulder improvements. This is an outhouse, pure plain and simple. But they're very simple to maintain. I feel like you need facilities, but this gives you an opportunity to talk about water quality and to talk about other things. But this structure, I think, cost about $1,600. And it's basically an outhouse and it moves from one side to the other. When it fills up on one side, you move the toilet seat. When it moves to the other, then you put a lot of wood chips in there. So this is a naturally recycling privy or a muldering privy. One of these would be very inexpensive and I think that's what you ought to look to. You've got a low intensity, low infrastructure park here. Now, one of the things that would be nice about this area is you've got, here's what the entrance is off of Lumber Ridge Road, is you've got a nice flat area there. They're using it for parking. But what I think that you might ought to try and do is to create something that goes along with the theme of a birding park. This is just a bunch of birdhouses, but I think it would be interesting if you could do something of this ilk. And where this came from, when we were out there, there was a woman with her kid and she said, "I love to come here. I love to let my children have untethered time." And I asked her, what would she like to see in addition to the park? And she said, "A little bit of a playground." This is an idea for a treehouse-type playground. And what we're seeing now is these parks have, the creation of these little playground areas has such nice themes to it. And this is a concrete bager that's, and the gentleman came up from the land and took a look at the park. But what I suggest that you do is create a theme of birds. Let's do something of this ilk with a bird theme. And let's do it like this, just in the front area, not the whole place, because I still think that you should keep it relatively unfettered and relatively wild. And this is what you're going to see. Birds mean business. This is a lot of business. There are a lot of people who traveled the world over to do bird watching. One of the things that I was told when I came here was, well, we don't have a lot of water. For some reason, the political spectrum, they cut a river out in Cherokee County and Gilmore County and we didn't get a river. But one of the things we have is we have this beautiful area. No one would dispute this. Why don't we put our ecological foot forward and go for something of this elk where we have a birding preserve? And that's it. Low cost, low magnets, and let's, don't go to the city for the money. Let's see if we can't raise these funds privately. Councilman Faust has already spoken with Home Depot in regards to doing signage, in regards to interpretive signage, possibly the muldering privy. The trails themselves are in relatively good shape, but they could be surfaced. We could go to the marble plant, get the aggregate from them. I think that this could be done very inexpensively, passively, and we would get the most bang for our buck because birding is big business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Questions, council?
There's no water on that. There's no surface water there.
Yes, there is. There's a creek that runs on the, it would be the eastern part. It's very pretty down there. And there's actually some wetlands on the side. It may have been stormwater created well, but it's wetlands all the same. There's a couple of areas where it had either been cleared off and I believe you guys, you borrowed some soil for one of your constructions. But there's also another open area. What I would suggest that you do, this is open habitat. You put signs out there that say, "Open habitat. These are the expected birds that you would see. And let's plant butterfly bushes. Let's plant things that would draw in the goldfinches or the field species like bluebirds. And let's keep the rest of it in relatively natural habitat." And that oak hickory habitat is quite nice in there.
Questions, council?
And one of the things, the gate that you saw there, we would be, and a lot of you know that we are generating funds. Of course, my transactional attorney calls it extortion funds. People are trying to get in the door at the last minute and they pay extra to do so. And we've been distributing these funds to the community. We've not funded a city project. We would be honored to pay for the gates. The gates are about $1,700 apiece. And I do think that if you were to put the two gates up in the main access here and you put a sign on there that says, "This park closes at sunset and opens back up at dawn." And let's see if that perception of fear or perception of safety or the need for safety goes away just because of that.
Okay. Council, what Dr. Keller's talking about is nothing but an addition to what we already have. It's not going to interfere with walking. It's the use we have now. And you're looking at adding signage, you're looking at in, talking about the covenant at dusk to dawn with basically as a tool in order to let people know it appears to be safe versus just a wilderness that you can walk in there.
And keeping the cars out of there in dark.
Well, if they get caught in there with cars, they're being a little bit trouble for the chief of police, hopefully. But we do have signage up for keeping the vehicles out. But that being said, what I'd like to do is go ahead and since John and Ann has initiated this, establish a full-grown committee. And let's move forward with this to bring it back and see if you can make a presentation to get a poll vote on what you actually want to do. We could do it tonight, but I think we could give a little more detail as to what you said tonight and have, get a city manager involved, get everybody to bring it back, and I think it'd be a good project.
Sure.
Then again, we could say, "Now, let's do it." But I think we need a little bit more...
Sure. And we have an estimate in regards to the cost.
Because the government comes talking about funding, basically.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So you look like you're a regular and now you're an old business.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Suddenly somebody in old business with it. I'm sorry. Why don't we do that with, and we go over to the street? Why don't we do that with, and we'll go over the street, come back to what they're trying to find. Have had to leave the store. I think if you want to make a motion, go get the store. Let's just do it.
Okay. Let's throw you guys in the committee, let you work. Dr. Keller, I do see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, fingerprint, scan and purchase. Chief Love?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Our fingerprint machine, we've got it actually back in 2007, so it is 11 years old. And it was wore out and it's outdated. And we didn't used to use it a whole lot. We used that, but a little story about that. About 2014, Sheriff Craig called me and he said, "Hey, could y'all get a fingerprint machine? Could you do me a favor?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "You know, we have the fingerprint on schoolteachers, faculty. If you get fingerprinted, if you chaperone a band at the Manhattan, we had the fingerprint sergeant, nickel post commander, state patrol, my long guilty took your children to chaperone to Manhattan." Anyway, so, and I said, "Okay, fine." And I didn't know it was going to be that many people. See, the sheriff's department's machine is back there with the jail, isn't it? And making kind of the people coming back there with inmates were kind of uneasy. So I said, "I was right there." And since then, we keep a log of the fingerprints since 2014, 1,200 people. So an average is nearly about two a day. Sometimes we don't do nine, sometimes we do five. Like I said, this wore out and I costed the new machine and updated one $1,500. That would come out of our tech fee correctly and, you know, out of the general fund, so.
So you said we did 1,200 a year?
Uh, no, since 2014, when the sheriff asked me.
And you do the school, you said the school system?
No, we did all the school system. We had everything.
And Greg did bring that to my office and we did discuss that before you started fingerprinting out of college.
Yeah.
Quite a little ordeal. Just gets you in trouble, I'll take that.
Yeah, I didn't know, when he said, you know, help from the school, I was thinking, well, you know, teachers, you know, they can have a career in teaching if somebody doesn't want to do it a year. Oh, Lord, my brother, we're all dying. Everything's dead. More than ten, of course, we got fingerprint alcohol, other places, people working at rest homes and stuff. Everybody comes to that.
And evidently, something happened with the fingerprinting. We couldn't get our...
Yeah, it's old. It keeps resetting.
Are we the reason, are we the reason the gentleman's not going to get his license this month?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, with that, did you give us a process?
$1,500, $1,500.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of $1,500 coming out of the tech fund.
I'd like to make the motion that we spent $1,500 out of the tech fund on our fingerprint machine.
Need a second.
I'll second that.
Motion's second. Discussion. Being out of our fair, but we show hands.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Council.
You're next.
Okay. I got, actually, he's getting, well, he wants to...
I'm not playing ball.
Item C, city court failure to appear fee.
Jim Louie? Can you help see and give him support? Counsel?
Got a request from the clerk of court to institute a $50 failure to appear fee for people coming into the court, not coming into court as scheduled. I discussed this with Mr. Pickett and I think there, he was going to do some research on it. Bill, what...
I'd say no. Not in the way that's outlined. What we're supposed to do is when somebody misses court, there's been some new standards that are supposed to be instituted. I don't know where they are because I don't go to city court or the city. We have a separate prosecutor there. But they're supposed to give a written letter, in writing, 30-day notice. Give the, I won't say customers, bad word, but give the person that got the right of due process to come in. There's some other things go on that I've heard that are not particularly, I don't think is legal, but I don't think it's exactly right. They want to issue a failure to appear. I think the only thing they can do is do it on the warrant and they can charge a warrant fee, but just because they don't come to court or they miss court or they came in late or something like that.
Could the judge not declare a fee by, within the parameters of the city court?
I would have to direct you to the city of Calhoun and their federal lawsuit.
Okay. Well, what we'd like to do is...
And I thought you'd all be tabled tomorrow.
Excuse me, first. I thought there was already a penalty for failure to appear in court.
Not when there's not a warrant against you.
So if you decide you don't want to come to city court, you just don't come? Greg?
Tanya was giving, you know, we bill the courts, our job to give them to the courts. And she was saying back years ago, we had that and the legislative rule, you couldn't do that, so they took it away. Well, Tanya just went to some training, the clerks in Matto, all over the state, La Mir, Island over there for two days. And they have some legislation to bring that back. And doing a little research, I kind of got inside. My wife works for a probate court discussing this. Tanya, last night, probate court charges a $500, I mean, a $50 fee is what we're asking for. You go further south and the bigger you get, I think Cobb down there is a $200 fee. Say, one time, they took it away from us, but now according to Tanya, since the legislation has changed, they're bringing back that fee.
Okay, do you ask a win?
I don't know that. And maybe you wise it all, like probate does it, I can't does it, I don't know. And we used to do here, go back in the, call the court, call the warrant fee, Richard Thurman was there back in the day.
Well, if I were watching this on YouTube or No Pickens and you told me I didn't have to appear to court for no fine or penalty.
That's why they brought it back from what Tanya and the training that she received. That's exactly what it is. Well, there is, they can issue a warrant.
Failure to appear, you can issue a warrant, that becomes it.
That becomes a separate charge.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
But, Counsel, on certain things, we only take more friends than shoplift. Okay, that's a citation that we wrote with City George, it's $1,500. Well, if they don't show up to court, we can't send a DPS form on them. That's what we do when they don't show up for a traffic violation. We send it into the state.
Right.
The state of Georgia will suspend your license.
So there's penalty.
Exactly. We can't send it in for disorderly conduct and shoplifting because they deal strictly with driving, district's not shoplifting, disorderly conduct, so.
And we try to handle shoplifting in the cities so that we can actually handle the cases without making it insane. I'll tell you what we do, recommend. Why don't we table this? You have Tom, Miss Tanya, be here at the next month's meeting and we'll start the process again and see if we can get some resolution.
We'll do some research and bring it back.
Okay.
I asked her to come today, but she didn't know this was on the agenda, but she had, she's got two kids, ball, baseball and stuff.
Okay, I understand that.
They put me down for next month and I'm like, sure.
We entertain a motion to table. You got a motion to table? Second?
Sir?
Being out of our fair choice? You're an old business again. Thank you. This most old business we've ever had. Okay, is Dave, Mr. Hall here?
All right.
Mr. Long. Waterline installation, Appalachian Court, 200 Lake Road, item D.
Mayor Council, we're looking at roughly two miles of water lines to be put in from Appalachian Court off of Johnson Road down Talking Rock Road, the old Highway 5. David and his crew have set out trying to get some prices on the pipe. We have five different prices. The low bid that came in was $45,983. The next low bid was $47,117 and they go on that to like $53,000 in that area.
This for six-inch line? That's 200?
Yes. Class nine, excuse me, nine hundred. The, I have just found out, I wasn't aware of none of this, but we've got, from the company with the low bid, we've got some things ordered that have not been, that's been ordered and paid for and we haven't received it yet. At the recommendation of David, maybe looking at the second low bid or something until we get this other situated, get our materials from, so.
Can you say that again?
The low bid...
Is it $45,93?
Yeah, this company. Evidently, there's some confusion or something on some orders or so. I don't know the details. I was just giving this paperwork late this afternoon and...
Okay, what's the name of the company?
Which one?
The low bid.
It's called Core and Main.
Spell that?
C-O-R-E and Main, M-A-I-N.
Where they located? And Core and Main?
I don't see an address.
Have we ever purchased from this group?
Yes, yes, yes.
Why was David concerned about taking the low bid?
Oh, that was... That was... The old pump. Tell me what it is? Something about a pump. Like I said, I have all the...
My understanding is that in a prior project over six months ago, there was some work done, a pump had not been delivered yet. The second lowest bid that we have...
Forty-seven?
Is for what, $1,300 more? I did my math.
Yes, something like $1,300.
It's for somebody that we have worked with before and have a lot of satisfaction. Recommendation from David is to take the second lowest bid.
I've never taken the second lowest bid before it did the first.
See, they're not too up there.
Well, why is David not here?
He's had some dental issues over the weekend. He's been to the dentist today, from what I understand, he's just, he couldn't make it to that.
You entertain a motion?
You said we worked with the company?
Yeah, it's a consolidated pipe and supply. And they're going to be the ones that, you know, that they come out and do tasks for us and things also. We weren't with them once they were ever contacted.
I think if David feels uncomfortable with other company, respect him, you know, let's talk. I'm Tanya, always the one for the lowest bid, but she ain't got a bad feeling, so trust me. Bill, are you familiar with it?
I was told David talked to me about it this afternoon and something about a pump that we have already paid for six months ago, that they have never received. What kind of pump, I couldn't tell you, wouldn't know if they told me. But the company that has the low bid, I also understand from David, and I don't know, I just have to take his word, they have a new name now. From what they had is the same people, they changed the name of the company.
Okay.
And that's all I know. I mean, I just have to know what he told me.
Lucy, are you aware of any pump that we bought that we didn't hit?
Nope. Nobody's mentioned it to me at all.
Part of that, where?
Wonder what it's supposed to be pumping?
Well, Counsel, we're getting along, Liz, but this seems awfully, David should be here for the, if we're not going to accept the low bid, explain in detail. So this water line is not going to end all be all if it's not put in within a month?
Right. We'll begin with the research and bring a solution.
Okay. You entertain a motion to table? You got a motion to table? Motion's second. Discussion. Being out of our fair, but we show hands. Thank you. We'll have a double meeting next month.
Do you have any thoughts on what's going on with the public?
Yeah, I found out about the second one. I'll be up there.
Okay. Item B, holiday lighting committee report. Mr. Louie?
Yes, we, at last meeting, appointed many, Mayor Weaver and Councilman Sneby and myself to look at holiday lighting. It's been discussed at a work session. I think the recommendation is that the city participate in holiday lighting to the tune of approximately $12,000. That would be $6,250 for lighting the alley between what used to be Weeks Jewelry and now Wingology and then lighting two, the larger tree, little trees on Main Street.
I apologize, I wouldn't have any committee meeting and I don't think you were either. I wasn't there and you, were you there without me?
No, it was a workshop.
I know, but we didn't meet without this, but you actually made a recommendation, the workshop. So I'm willing to go with what our council wants to do with that, so we entertain a motion.
Jim, tell them how much the two trees was.
$2,500 each.
Okay, two trees.
Right. How long you close when we take the recommendation of the committee?
Have a motion to approve the project? Have a motion. Motion's second. Discussion.
In the work session, I expressed some concerns about whether or not we have received the proper permission from the building owners and I just want to go on record and make sure that we did that.
That will be done. That will be part of the installation process before it's installed directly.
You put a discussion? Being out of our fair, but we show hands. Chairman, just thank you, Counsel. Next, item F, when the air conditioning... City manager? I'm not skip on nothing. Item F, Jim?
We have an in-your-package proposal from Denton Heating and Air Conditioning for $4,400. The air conditioning heat, the area currently occupied by the city manager. There is no air conditioning in there and the heating was inspected by Denton and they asked us to take it out of service. Unsafe.
I make a motion that we approve the court hold on the dollar.
We did talk about, I'm a disciplined question. I'm getting that look from Mayor Weaver. There was not enough room to move ductwork from the system into that area.
Okay, so you want to have its own unit?
Yeah, these are mini split units.
Okay. You got a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Sir?
Motion's second. Discussion. Being out of our fair, but we show hands. Thank you, Counsel.
Tell us when the unit's in there before, Chief?
We have one.
You have one?
They're hopping on and going.
Funny, that way.
Item G... Cold in the winter and hot in summer. Item G, Carl Benson Institute proposed to find interview city manager. Jim?
Again, in your package, you have a proposal from Benson Institute to advertise the city manager's position as being open. They would accept the applications. They would interview mayor and council to determine what the mayor and council would be looking for in a successful candidate. Evaluate the application to make a recommendation to council on who to interview. Final decision on who to interview would be that of council. The council could accept in all or just in part their recommendation. Interviews would be done by council. There is an option in the proposal that Benson Institute would participate in interviews at the... would participate in interviews at the tune of fifteen hundred dollars per day. Total package excluding the interviews is nine thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'm sorry, nine thousand?
Four, four eighty-seven fifty.
And they will let the, do all the advertising, do a nationwide search? Okay?
Regional search, I believe.
Okay, regional? Don't we get anybody from Montana?
No, we're, we're trying to wait for California and Montana, and Washington.
And so, after that, they will have interviews, and they're gonna charge us fifteen hundred dollars a day?
Fifteen hundred per day, yeah, and that's, that's not mandatory that they be there for the interviews. My suggestion is, I would, I would suggest you target maybe five interviews that could be done in one day, and then secondary interviews, if you decide were necessary, I think could be done without the Benson Institute.
Okay, it's Carl Benson, you want to confuse me, did you say Benson?
Benson.
Benson.
The young.
Carl Benson Institute. Okay, so, we discussed a little bit about doing our own ads, doing our own search committees, and, and bringing it in, let this council make the decision without spending that kind of money?
This was discussed at the work session?
I know, but it was, it was not discussed.
That's an option.
Citizens did like these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, to take care of our business, and I, I, I think it's a lot of money for what we could do, so I just, that's just my put into it, and then you can discuss a little bit, 'cause I think it's a heck of a job.
Yeah, it is a lot of money, John, it is also a heck of a job.
It takes it out of our hands.
Yeah, well, I don't think it takes anything out of your hands, the final vote's gonna be from mayor and council.
Okay, I just got, I just wanna put my two cents worth in.
I, I, my opinion, it adds some transparency to the interview process, having, having the UGA or Carl Benson Institute to involve. And I, I think they probably, having an ad with their name on it adds some, some hopefully prestige to the search.
Have we discussed what kind of salary we're gonna give them?
That would be part of the interview process, institute has with mayor and council.
Okay. And that, that would be an open forum?
Uh, I would say that.
Transparency, where are you talking about?
I would say their interview with, with mayor and council would be individually, instead of with, with the group.
You mean they won't have, we won't have a meeting to discuss this in front of the camera?
Uh, the, what, what you would want in a city manager, and if you want it in front of a camera, that can't be done, I believe their idea was to do it individually.
No, I, I thought they had this word called transparency, sir.
I think, I think this is much more transparent.
All right, whatever. Okay, with that, we entertain a motion. So we got a motion to approve nine thousand four eighty-seven fifty for the search, and then one thousand five, what, oh, sixteen hundred?
One thousand five hundred.
One thousand five hundred, per day, Carl Benson Institute has worked with the city, whether it's one, two, three, four of those guys, the gals, we don't know, just hope they didn't learn a lot of that. Okay, I got a motion.
That's optional.
That's optional.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Any further discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Greenspace use request, Pickens Art and Cultural Alliance, Jim?
The packet has, this is not a written request, you won't find anything in your package, but they had made a telephone call to me earlier last month about wanting to have the cornbread reunion on the second of August, would request use of the Greenspace, at the old Groper Hospital.
Entertain a motion to approve this request?
Second.
Got a motion, John, hit beat you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Unanimous. Item I, Jim, wine tasting event, June the second, by the Chamber of Commerce?
In your package, you have a request from the Chamber of Commerce to use the, to have a wine tast- tasting on Main Street, on their Saturday event that was approved earlier in one of our earlier meetings, different thing, one, they want to be able to serve wine on Main Street.
What part of Main Street?
Courthouse area.
Up by my law.
Yes, sir.
That's this Saturday. The wine tasting event, I guess that would be approved by, I'm sure the council approved it, do they have a caterer, or is this just gonna be the council having wine, will have wineries, or what's gonna happen?
I believe it's wineries. Jerry, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, just very, very quickly, the, the idea is to try to get the involvement of our local wineries, the first step to getting the state permit, which is required, is to get written approval from the city.
Okay.
So this is step one, really, before, excuse me, before we can take any further action.
Thank you, I knew there had been that, another step with it. Okay, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve for them to continue with the process.
Okay, wine tasting event, June the second, Chamber of Commerce, we got a motion, second?
Sir?
Got a motion, second, discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Thank you. We got a wine tasting event, June the fourth, the Bragg. Uh, Jim?
To continue the weekend, the bike ride across Georgia would be in Jasper on June fourth, Chamber of Commerce is asking if you'd be able to serve wine in the same area on June fourth, that will be included in their request for this thing.
Jerry, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing, apparently, looking at the state permit, the state permit is good for three days, so actually, these two events, because of the timeframes, if there was just one letter saying that the, you know, city was in support of the chamber event spanning that time period, that should cover the state permit for that three-day period, should we decide to do something during the Bragg event, and that's not a hundred percent decided, so again, because of the timeframe, because of the span of the state permit, these two things could actually, upon closer inspection, I think it'd just be rolled into one approval letter that would allow us to move forward with the state permit.
Okay, thank you.
This is a Monday morning.
Did we do?
What's that?
Uh, Jerry, you have five to nine.
So before business?
Five to ten, excuse me.
So before business is closed down, you're gonna close down the street to get to serve alcohol?
No, on Monday, the street, there's no closing of the street on Monday.
But where are you gonna serve the wine?
They are, they, they set up a base camp, and, Bill, like I said, not, not a hundred percent sure, we just thought we'd try to keep the option open.
Me being a business owner, don't quit at five o'clock, and I'd like to know where you're gonna start serving alcohol.
Okay, I would be glad to address that, their base camp is centered at, at Leaning Park and after middle school. If we did any serving of wine, that would also be in the Main Street Central Business District, as we proposed for the other event.
So they're gonna ride their bicycle up there and drink?
No, we're actually, we'll be providing a, a shuttle between the base camp and Main Street, similar to how we did during the Marvel Festival, as well as other transportation to make sure that these individuals go to restaurants and other locations throughout our community, and give our business owners a return.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give them, or one way, to approve the three days as an option.
Okay, motion to basically blend that in with item I, it'll bleed in. Is a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second, discussion? Further discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Thank you. Two thousand seventeen budget amendment for financials general fund, Ms. Lisa?
No, I'm wrong. This is sort of a housekeeping thing for our audit, audited financials, we came in, and in your, in your packet, I put a copy of the general fund budget compared to actual for the year, we overall came in under budget, but some of the departments went over, and so I'm reallocating some of the department budget amounts, in the legislative department, group health insurance was more than budgeted, and also salaries were more than budgeted, and that's because the council had more work sessions than we had budgeted for, and in the elections department, we just didn't budget enough for the election last year, municipal court, city paid more for judge and public defender than we had budgeted, so it went over a little, and in the protective inspection department, the city had transferred an employee, I think from the street department, with a higher salary than what we had budgeted for, and so we took from funds that were, we came out over and moved to those departments, I'm sorry, departments, to reallocate and balance the budget.
Okay, and all the other expenditures that we're talking about, the new water line, the hiring of the city manager, all this is gonna blend in with, because those items weren't budgeted.
This is budgeted, this is, we're talking seventeen, I'm sorry, we're talking two thousand fifteen for the office.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we're not, okay, do it, okay. I apologize, I started thinking presently, you, but, okay, would entertain a motion to approve your request?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
To me and her budget?
Yeah, to me and her budget.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Thank you. Okay, item L, planning commission report. Mr. Underwood?
Mayor and council, on April the seventeenth, the planning commission met to consider a request by Tom Adderhold, or actually, his son, to change his zoning on his property on Chambers Street, and they had some questions, and, so they tabled the request, and they should, it would've come up before this board, if, if it was still in order, but I received this letter, or this small letter, last week. Dear Mr. Underwood, this is a notify you that the reference resuming application is hereby withdrawn effective immediately, and that's from Tom Adderhold Properties and, I can't, the guy that, that looks after that, for him, I can't pronounce his name, but.
Okay, if I might, Jim, you have anything to add to this?
No, I found out about this morning.
Okay, uh, this is typical procedure or move that a developer will make when it did not receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission, there was more information that was needed by the planning commission in order that they would entertain change in the zoning, so this allows them to come back before the city council and the planning commission within, in less than a year, so that it keeps it open for them, and that's what's happened, so you, you're telling us that tonight, that, that put the brakes on to the last minute.
Right.
Usually, I like to see that happen at the planning commission meeting, but, uh, thank you for doing that, and we'll appreciate your report.
All right.
Thank you.
Can we ask about any information about what they were, what they were trying to accomplish?
Sure. Well, several questions asked about if they'd done a, a sort of a study on traffic, they had not, they were asking about different ways.
Explain what the property is, I think, explain what the property is.
This is out on Chambers Street, you know where the building used to be that they tore down, the Mel Building?
Right.
Well, this is the property behind that, nine acres behind, that's a five-acre track, and this is nine acres behind that.
Got another piece, sir.
Okay.
It's currently designed what?
Commercial.
For.
Commercial, yes. And that one, that one was only tar free. Everybody's only tar free.
Because they went and put forty-eight units.
Forty-eight units, and they, they had not, they had prepared anything, you know, to tell the impact of forty-eight units out there, and so I'm sure that, that was why the planning commission decided to table it.
Well, I, I attended that meeting, and I indicated to them that they needed something for recreation for that many families.
Right.
Because our parks are already overtaxed, that's close to that, and for that many units, they need to come back with a better plan than what they were proposing, and I, I think they picked up on that, obviously.
I think so, too.
Thank you, sir. Item M, reduced rate application?
I have the one, pass it on. This person is on full disability, and she qualifies for the reduced rate. And the income amount she qualifies.
Entertain a motion?
So.
Got a motion to approve the application?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Thank you, counsel. Counsel, item N, adopt resolution, service delivery strategy, I believe that's in your book, uh, service delivery strategy resolution. A resolution of the mayor and city council of Jasper for the purpose of authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Pickens County and the cities of Nelson and Talkin Rock to adopt the two thousand eighteen service delivery strategy update and other, and for other, other purposes. Whereas Pickens County and the city of Jasper, Nelson, and Talkin Rock adopted a service delivery strategy pursuant to the requirements set forth by the General Assembly in House Bill four eighty-nine, codified as Official Code of Georgia thirty-six dash seventy dash twenty, which original document was executed in Sept- in September nineteen ninety-nine, and amended in two thousand one, two thousand three, and two thousand and eight, and whereas pursuant to the provision of Official Code of Georgia thirty-six dash seventy dash twenty-eight B, Pickens County and its municipalities are required to review and revise, if necessary, the county's joint service delivery strategy in conjunction with the updates to the Conference of Plan, said Conference of Plan must be updated every ten years, and whereas Pickens County and the cities of Jasper, Nelson, and Talkin Rock have mutually agreed to the services as outlined within the service delivery strategy as updated, and whereas opponent's approval and certification, the service delivery strategy, strategy shall be submitted to the state of Georgia for review and approval. that all citizens of the county and its municipalities are provided necessary public service, can therefore be resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and the city council of Jasper, that the mayor and council, city council of Jasper do hereby authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Pickens County and the cities of Nelson and Talkinrock to adopt and certify the two thousand eighteen service delivered strategies, strategies updated as presented and authorized. Said document to be submitted to the state for review and approval. Council, uh, the RC will, uh, provide all the documentations, but basically, all the things that the city of Jasper has dealt with for the last twenty years, thereabout, has, uh, been agreed upon by myself and the county commissioner to stay the same. I don't think there was any indication for any single change, was there?
No.
So that allows us to maintain our water service delivery area. Uh, we provide, uh, all the services that we provide to the citizens of Jasper, and the county does theirs, as well as Nelson and Talkinrock. But this, uh, this was quite the event back in the nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, uh, when this document was first agreed upon. Uh, in fact, there was a lawsuit at that particular time, uh, when the county wanted to, uh, create Pickens West, that being the area around the racetrack and so on and so forth, and it was determined by the EPD that that was our service delivery area, and that pretty much brought it into discussions. Because at that time, I lost a lot of friends, basically dealing with county administrations, arguing over service delivery strategy. Made quite a speech, as the Georgia Municipal Association wants to deal with service delivery strategy. But anyway, that being said, if you want more information on it, uh, there, I'm sure you can get it on the way up. Would entertain a motion to approve the service delivery strategy resolution as read. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. Ben, I'll pay up with your hands. That's unanimous. So adopted this sixth day, what's the day?
Seventh.
Seventh, seventh day of May two thousand eighteen, and we'll do all that, send that to the RC tomorrow, or the DCA.
Yeah, I'll get you to sign this.
Thank you. First reading ordinance amendment for breweries, Mr. Pickens?
Uh, as far as the, uh, request to have an ordinance for a brewery, I've been working on that for over two weeks, for over a month, really. Um, I'm asking to have a work session before adopting this kind of ordinance, simply because it's going to be a major change of your, uh, alcohol ordinance. It affects more than just, um, allowing a brewery to have it, but it also affects your zoning, uh, which you need to have some time to think about it, see it, make any changes that you want to, improve the operational hours, uh, those kind of things. I have been to, uh, during the middle of the decade, I have been to about three of these types of places. Um, not all of them are alive. They're all pretty much different as to whatever the owners may want, and, um, whatever they, whatever they decide, what their design is going to be. But I would like to, uh, see if y'all can meet on Monday night.
Do you, do you have, do you have a copy of some sort of ordinance we look at?
I don't. Um, you'll have it before you come to meet Monday, if we can have one Monday if we can't, pick another day. I'm free really all next week. Uh, it takes two readings. Uh, I was hoping that we could meet on Monday. If you like what you see, if you don't like what you see, then I can make the changes that need to be made. Have the first meeting Wednesday and second reading on Thursday.
I'm not going to be in town next week. Mr. Loney can help to go over the doors and have everything ready for your work session? Uh, if that's possible, and then we can meet next week, or we can, or we can, we can approve this, uh, ordinance for the first meeting next month?
Well, I, I originally had told Mr. Loney that I really wanted to probably have two work sessions, uh, simply because I was talking, the first one, and then you're going to come back and say, well, I thought about it, now we really don't need to do that, but we need to do this. And, uh, uh, every one of those are different, so.
Okay.
Don't think it's something that you should be rushing into.
Per your.
Sounds like a good idea.
Per your recommendation, why don't we set Monday, six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Uh, as a work session for the city council and the city manager, as I will be at a water conference.
Well, you have more brain slap there on the other two ordinance than the.
Yeah.
Okay. Entertained a motion to establish next Monday at six o'clock the work session?
Certainly.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Ben, I'll pay up with your hand. Thank you, council. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Jim.
Did you want to try and schedule a first reading before the June meeting?
Well, y'all can make that decision, we can discuss that when I get back.
Okay.
If that works out, we can do that. Is there, is there a, is there a rush, is there something going on that needs to be done by next month?
The, uh, potential, uh, brewery people, what are you going to call them, brewers, uh, are, uh, waiting on the city's approval before they can continue with the state license, which can take up to six months.
Okay.
Which they might not like the way our ordinance reads.
Okay. Would they also, I would, maybe we could set an appointment, you and I can meet with them, as well, not for me. But we can move forward, and would be very difficult to have a call meeting to get the rolling of the council wishes. Okay, that would just continue discussion, we, we already go to that, right? Okay. Uh, mayor's report, oh, a closed session, item P. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the inconvenience, but we have a request for a closed session for potential liability. Mr. Capper, I'm sure you're hanging around, but glad to see you tonight. I get to rub it in the profit. Just gives us one, just give us one, would entertain a motion to go into closed session?
I'd like a motion to go into closed session.
A motion?
Please, Mr. Loney.
Okay, you got a motion going closed session, need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ben, I'll pay up with your hands. Thank you. Uh, Jim will stay as will the city clerk and the city attorney. Please turn off.
Motion to come out of closed session?
Make a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Ben, I'll pay up with your hands. We're now back in regular session. Uh, mayor's report, financial report, Lisa?
In your pocket, you have the financial reports for the month of, uh, well, to the point of April two thousand eighteen. We're third into the year. Uh, all departments at this point are under budget. Uh, and the general fund, we collected, we've had a good month for our sales tax, we collected a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars for a year-to-date total of four hundred and four thousand nine hundred and four, uh, compared to three hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine eleven last year. Uh, and SLOST, we, at this point, have a cash balance of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, we collected eighty-five thousand five hundred this month. Uh, and the water fund, we are under budget in all departments in the water fund, and that's all of my report, unless you have any questions?
Did you have a lead change? I might not, you might say that.
Lead change? It's about a hundred and ninety right now, and it's probably a little more than that because we're not sure what we, what we will collect for this month.
Just to add on to that, Damon has mentioned, he's very happy with the lead change, uh, business right now. Very strong.
Any questions, council? Thank you. Loney, item B?
Very careful, just, uh, we did pull the bid package, as we have discussed in the work session, and it did get back in paper today with new bid, adding milling and everything on it, so it'll be ready to open bids on June the fourth.
How many roads again for the record?
Well, I think it's thirteen, I think, but it's all the downtown business area, down to Dixie Street, from Dixie Street to Bird Mountain Street Road.
Okay. And, uh, an update on the D cell in, on fifty-three on the?
Uh, they have moved their equipment out, the turning lane is, uh, as far as the work is completed, uh, they just got to come in, put in some striping.
It's turned into be truly a turning lane, not D cell lane, but we hope to indicate that it still serves quite a purpose. Thank you, Loney. Chief Roke, item C.
Good evening again, mayor and council. For the month of April, the Jasper Police Department responded to nine hundred and thirty-four calls, service to nine-one-one center, responded to forty-four motor vehicle accidents. Issued a total of one hundred and forty-six citations for the following, one DUI, seventy-nine speeding, eight-seat belt, three child, refraining two shoplifting, one uninsured motors, forty-eight miscellaneous, force suspended or revoked. George State Patrol issued a total of seventy-four citations, city for grand total, city court two hundred and twenty citations. Took fourteen state warrants for the following, Ford refers to grade felony, financial transaction card theft felony, financial transaction card fraud felony, simple battery, family violence, criminal trespass, damage to property, aggravated assault felony, false and prison felony, lost theft, mislaid property, possession of controlled substance felony, one disorderly conduct, two theft by taking, one burglary, the second degree felony, and one shoplifting felony. Miscellaneous calls responded to, forty-one alarm calls, twenty-two disorderly, ten harassment, eleven trespassing or lording, forty-eight suspicious activity, twenty-five domestic crimes investigated, one burglary.
Questions, council? Thank you, chief. Chief Roke?
Good evening, mayor, council. On the month of April, the city's fire department responded to two emergency. Those were no structured fires in or outside the city, one vehicle fire inside, one outside. No grass fires in, five outside the city, fourteen murder vehicle accidents with injuries inside, none outside. Seventy-one emergency medical responses in, thirty out, five other calls inside, one outside. At the end of the month, it was five hundred and seven. Fire investigation looked at two sets of plans for renovation and conductive thirteen inspections.
Chief, quick.
Can you share what you heard about the fire truck? New, new purchase?
Uh, new purchase? Uh, the fire truck is actually ahead of schedule, it's already on the assembly line. It's possible we could have it by late August, early September, instead of November or December like originally.
John, you have anything else? Is that what's up?
Uh, just everything's going. Kids are busy, just with this website.
I heard a rumor that, uh, the coach was going to get involved in the high school, is that true?
He is, he is.
Why do we not hear that? Give us a little bit on that.
Well, basically, what the coach is doing, he's going to bring all the kids in so he can give them a playbook, when they're younger, so once they get on up there, just load stuff.
You think you're going to have to participate, train coaches, et cetera, or just, uh, give them a playbook?
He's basically giving them a playbook, coaching the coaches that are coaching them.
Okay. Been no other business, but entertain a motion?